I will call this meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to order. It is June 15th, 2020. It is 6:00 PM tonight. Vice Chairman Larry Yoder will lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Marty Peel will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Bless Britain. Our kind and most gracious heavenly fathers, we've come before you this evening. We come to you with humble hearts. Lord, we'd ask that you bring your blessings down upon this country, upon the states, upon the counties, the cities. Be with our law enforcement personnel as they go about their regular duties and also the duties that they've been called in to assist in. We'd ask you to be with those people that have protesting and the ones that have lost and the ones that are healing from this virus that we have going on in our country. We'd ask that you touch each and everyone's heart to remind them that we all are born of one and that we are your children and that we should live in harmony, learning how to get along, being respectful of one another, respecting each other's rights, respecting each other's beliefs. But ask that you bring your blessings upon us that we can all learn how to get along in a country that has been very fruitful over the years. It has brought blessings to many, many people. Lord, we'd ask you to be with each and every one of us tonight as we try to make the decisions that apply to the county. Be with those people that are people in Raleigh's. They go about trying to come up with a budget to make things better for the people of North Carolina. Be with those who are sick and afflicted and we ask all these things in thy name. Amen.
Attention. Waiting for the flag. Salute, pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the
which it stands.
Which it stands.
Thank you, gentlemen. Commissioners report, is there anything that any commissioner would like to report on?
Yes, sir. Chairman Mayberry, Mr. French and I went to the town hall meeting with George Meyer Holloman and Macy Jones and Joe Simpson, Paul Sink and Mr. McLean and Michael Henry was there as well. They were discussing the recent protests and concerns that some of the citizens of the county have. They were acknowledged for, you know, being peaceful and civil in their actions. And the bottom line was that they, you know, they have some issues that they think need to be heard and want people to hear them. So it was, I would say, a pretty good meeting. Mr. French may want to elaborate further, but it was a good place to start to constructively look at issues instead of destructively look at issues.
It was definitely a good first step, like you're saying.
Mr. Chairman, I have something. I was able on June 11th, attended a Carolina Land and Lakes meeting. Actually, the meeting was at Rocky Face in the, I guess, the event center of the new building we have out there. Several people from out of town were there in the Land and Lakes board that were having their meeting there. Pretty interesting, they had a little history on Rocky Face. I'll not go back through all of it, but 1900s, it was used as a functioning quarry from 1922 to 1933. 1940 to 41, the prison labor used it for work to mine there. And then at 82, the Felbrun Foundation purchased Rocky Face, Martin Marietta. Then we go on to 2002, it was used for studying different plants, a lot of unique plant lives out there. Some of them, I remember, there's keavers, Bristol moss, striped garlic, shiny leaf, meta sweet, American barberry, red and flat sage, cothacu, giant skipper and a giant swallowtail. And they say a lot of those are just something that you don't, you know, they don't find just anywhere. Then we go on to, it was rest of the 03. Anyway, in 2010, Carolina Land and Lakes donated Rocky Face to Alexander County. And, you know, it's a centerpiece for the county now and a lot of people are going out there and attending. This year it may be down a little bit because of the COVID-19 being closed, but I thought that was pretty interesting of that. And I was also able to attend a phone conference and Jeff Elmore was in on it. And I did remind and make mention of the wild down road, but he, you know, still keeps coming back. He said the governor and the 12 are appointed by the governor or who's controlling that. So I think we just need to keep mentioning wild down road everywhere we're at and keep it going. So, and kind of tailgating on Mr. Yoder's prayer. I come back to Ben Carson, I think we've all heard him in DC and some other places. And his thing is, you know, we're all Americans. There's no black Americans, white Americans, Asian Americans. We're all Americans if we're in the United States. So, you know, I would hope that we can all, you know, come together and resolve, you know, the issues that are going on across our country. And we are still a blessed nation with the things that we're able to do. But that's just a couple of things I had to mention. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Reese. Anyone else?
Chairman Mayberry, last second opportunity to, to cut the ribbon for them at the vault over in Bethlehem. It's a real nice sports bar restaurant and had a large crowd, a lot of good people over there. And the food's good and the coffee's good, but it was nice to welcome them into the community as a new business. And as far as I know, they're doing well.
All right. Anything else? If not, we'll move on. The agenda's before you. We do need to add the surplus items into the consent agenda. And I will make it in the form of a motion that we adopt the agenda with the addition of the surplus items.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. French.
Being on all those in favor, did I hear any, did somebody say anything?
Mr. Chairman, what I was going to say is the requests are for the surplus items are for Donna Clanton and for Daniel Millsaps. He's not retiring, he's leaving, but is to surplus their items.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Right. You got a motion and a second? Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. First item on the agenda is COVID-19 update. Leanne Wisnig, our Consolidated Human Services Director, Doug Gillespie, Director of Public Services and Rick French, our County Manager, will all speak. So, Leanne, if you want to go ahead.
Thank you. We currently have 51 cumulative cases. We, that is not new, that is total since we began. So I know that sometimes that's confusing, so I want to be real clear about that. Friday, we were at 45 cases and so we have seen a jump of six. I actually just had a call when the meeting just started from communications. So as soon as I'm done, I'll call and it's probably 52 cases now. The, and we still have eight under quarantine. Our two are still hospitalized. One of those two is improving, the other is not doing well at all. I'm very fearful. And of course, you, I know you've heard over the weekend that Friday, the state had its highest increase, one day increase until Sunday. And Sunday saw 1,443 new cases. So we, as a state, we are still seeing a huge increase. And we want to remind people, I know it's getting tiring, living under a pandemic and us preaching for you to be careful, wash your hands, wear your mask. But our county has done really, really well. So we want to encourage us to hang in there. We need to continue doing the things we've been doing because it's making a difference. What else can I tell you? Any questions?
Where are we at on the test kits now? Or, I mean, do you have a reliable supply and?
We do. We, we're really good with test kits. Doug Gillespie and I were talking earlier, ordering some more from the state in case we are having to do long-term care facility testing. But we are in good shape and we're testing every day. We're still doing that once a day to save our personal protective equipment. Gowns are still our biggest need and we're doing fine. We're managing, but that's actually helping a lot preserve that. I think Friday, we did 13 or 14 tests. So we're averaging double-digit testing every day. Some people that have been exposed and some people that are just concerned. Some people that are contacts, lots of contact tracing.
What about the antibody testing? And I've been seeing that some of the, I guess, when you go donate to Red Cross, donate blood to Red Cross now, that some of the places are doing the antibody testing. Is that at all of them or some of them, do you know?
I don't know. I'm not aware of that. Sorry, I can do some investigation though.
Okay.
That'd be a wonderful idea. We have done one antibody test just as a pilot, but go ahead, Doug, sounds like you've got.
Some of them are. It depends on the testing site and the facility that being used. The ones that I talked to, one of them was the buses, the community, I think it's the community blood. Sometimes they do and then sometimes they do not.
Yeah, I saw that somewhere. I think they had one in Alexander County or two. And then I know there was one, at least one in Catawba County.
I can't tell you, the state still is not doing antibody testing yet.
Okay.
I feel like a broken record on that one. I think I've said that the last, every meeting, right?
Yeah.
Maybe next time, right?
Keep our fingers crossed.
We're hopeful. We're ready. I mean, we're, you know, ready to do more testing and able.
What about at doctors' offices? Can you go to your doctor and get that done? Do you know that?
I have had several that have sent to private labs, yes. I had somebody today say they were tested. All that I have heard, which is, you know, handful of cases that were tested have all come back negative when they did the antibody. So, and many of them felt like they had had some strange something back, you know, around the holidays, January. So it will be very interesting when we do more antibody testing to really see the outcomes. But I want to make sure before we start those testing that they're accurate.
Right. Anyone else have any questions?
Leanne, is ours still coming mostly from outside of the county or is there some originating?
The last two weeks have been community acquired and we really don't know. You know, they've, they've been to work, they've been to grocery, they've been, you know, out and about. And so we feel like, we feel like it is definitely here. It's, I can tell you a couple of the cases that have not left the county and are positive from here. So obviously it was acquired here in Alexander County. So early on, it was more medical providers and people that were coming from outside. Now I think we've changed to more in county. So that's why I'm stressing, be cautious. Don't let your guard down yet. We're, we've done too well to, to not continue our diligent efforts.
Okay.
We certainly appreciate all the work that all of you guys are doing, you and Doug and all your staff, Mark and, Mark and everybody that's involved. I know it wears on you.
Thank you. They, we've got some great county employees that are dedicated.
Are you, I don't know if you can tell me specifically about this, but have we been able to keep all the, you know, have we have any positive cases coming out of our employees that are on the front lines there dealing with this?
We have. We've had a couple and we've been doing a lot of testing around their contacts. And luckily so far their contacts are coming negative, coming back negative, which is a good thing because, you know, we're cleaning our county buildings. We're wearing our masks, we're, you know, doing all the things we know to do. And so it's definitely working because the first county employee positive, we tested all of their close contacts and all those tests were negative. We had another frontline employee's test came back Friday positive and we tested Friday and today. We're still waiting on those results, but, but we're hopeful for negatives. So, and of course, you know, we've jumped in there and cleaned and done all the precautionary preventive work that we can. So, so far we've, we've done really exceptional. Our long-term care facilities are, you know, still working really diligently to, to keep those folks inside safe and it's.
And I know you've got a lot on your hands, but what about, you know, the school system opening up in the fall? Are they, is this going to be coming, you know, from Raleigh, here's what you have to do? Or is this more of a local effort, putting a plan together?
No, it's going to be DPI. Division of Public Instruction has been giving them information and right now they're being instructed, as far as I know. You know, that changes every minute. They're, they're having them to prepare for three type scenarios. And then when we get closer, they'll make that determination. But, but Raleigh's going to tell the school system what to do. And they're working really hard, you know, they did a great job with graduation and, you know, are continuing to plan for the fall. We're hopeful students can go back. I'm hopeful. We'll just have to wait and see.
Doug, would you like to give us an update on your end?
Just a couple of things. Like I said, me and Leanne, we're, we're talking before the meeting on the phone. And if you listen to the governor and the press release today or press conference today, she talked about the big thing that we're going to look at is that we're going to have to probably look at testing all the congregate facilities or the long-term facilities like we were, she was just talking about. My guys have already set up and started trying to work a plan before that actually takes effect. We're getting, we're going to order some kits for, for them also as we do that. We're still looking good on some PPEs or the personal protective equipment. And since your last meeting, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services put out what they call PPE push packs. And they were sent to our 10 long-term facilities or long-term care facilities, skilled nursing and some group homes throughout. And on June 2nd, we actually went and picked them up for eight of those 10 and we distributed them out and, and got them to them. So hopefully that PPE could last them for a little bit, but we're, we're still looking pretty good on our end right now. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
No, sir.
All right. Mr. French, would you like to update us on anything?
Just mentioned that we'll, we plan to start opening some of the county buildings this week. County administration building, the services building and so on. We're going to start phasing those in.
Okay. All right. Well, just pass your, pass our thanks along to your staff, Leanne and Doug and, you know, those at the Sheriff's Department. We appreciate, you know, all those people and what they do. And, you know, everybody's got a part to play in this and a role. And some are in harm's way more than others, but we're, you know, we're all out there and we're doing what we've got to do to keep Alexander County and this country moving forward. So we appreciate everyone and, you know, up and down the line, everything that they do.
Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, we'll just move on to item number two on the agenda, which is the 2020 fire grant. And Colin Mark Earl, who is the Fire Marshal and Assistant Director of Emergency Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I come forward to the Commissioners tonight to recognize and congratulate seven fire departments for receiving the 2020 fire grant through the North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal. So May 15, 2020 grants were awarded to Bethlehem Fire Rescue, Hidnap Fire, Stony Point Fire, Sugarloaf Fire, Toville Fire, Vashstow Fire and Wittenburg Fire Department. This is a matching grant, which the state provides 50% of the grant and the department provides the other 50%. And for a total amount for all seven departments, it comes to $84,722.50. And I just wanted to congratulate those departments and congratulate all of our organizations that they work hard and their dedication to continue to provide a professional service to their community. Any questions?
Yes. That's one, that's another. I mean, like I said, everybody's got a part to play in this community that we live in. And those guys that, you know, work all day and then they take time away from their families, their jobs and go out and volunteer to be volunteer firemen. We appreciate everything they do and the leadership that keeps those places going and protects our community. So thank you very much for those guys. Anybody have any questions?
Great job.
Yeah, we're always glad to see grant money coming into the local fire departments. All right. Well, if there's no more questions, Mr. Earl will move on to item number three and we appreciate your help on that.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Item number three is a report on the Bethlehem sewer project. And Dan Shaveldeen, the owner and engineer, Shaveldeen Engineering will give us an update.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank Alexander County for the opportunity to be part of this project. We all know what the positive impact's going to be on not only the Bethlehem community, but on Alexander County. Just as a personal note, I think I may have mentioned this before, we actually spend quite a bit of time running through Bethlehem. Matter of fact, I was up there three times yesterday, so it's, it's pretty close to us. I believe you've been provided progress reports in the past, so I'll try to be brief on this. And overall, I think the project's going well, particularly given the complex nature of the project, the degree of difficulty and digging and placing manholes as deep as we are and the proximity to some of these heavily traveled roads. You know what kind of traffic we're running into, wildlife access, particularly with the boat traffic, people coming in into the Wittenburg access area. Two brothers, utilities, a contractor, and overall they're making good progress. They've got two crews working. Crew number one started at Wittenburg Access at Alexander Pump Station number one. And they ran up through the Wittenburg Access up to Wildlife Access Road and they are approaching Shiloh Church Road. So they've laid approximately 1,600 feet of 20 and 21 inch pipe, four manholes between six and 15 feet deep. They should be open cutting Wildlife Access Road near Shiloh Church early next week. They'll be getting prepared for that the end of this week. Crew number two is they've completed Woodring Lane and that was about 630 feet of pipe and three manholes. They're currently on Heritage Farm Road. They've installed about 1,200 linear feet of eight inch pipe and four manholes. And again, they're six to 15 feet deep. And they should be boring underneath Heritage Farm Road later this week. And then they'll be running on the east side of Heritage Farm down to, down toward Rink Dam Road. As you would expect with a project of this nature, there are going to be some issues and some changes that are going to occur. Unfortunately, some of them are self-inflicted and others are because of some unknowns. We regularly meet with the contractor, walk the line, we look ahead, we try to anticipate what's going to come up and hopefully avoid any of these issues and conflicts. But again, some of them are just unknowns and I'll briefly describe some of these issues and some of the changes. I guess early in the project, as you know, we had a sewer spill. That was on the May 14th. We only have periodic inspection or observation in our contract, which means we're only on the project probably a few hours a day. But I happened to be there late Wednesday, the day prior to the spill. Met with contractor, they were on site. The City of Hickory Pump Station crew was also on site and they were coincidentally working on the pump station controls in the wet well there at Alexander Pump Station number one. The contractor and the city crew, they discussed site security, the bypass pumping setup and operations. And what I want to point out about the bypass pumping is, is what we consider a means and methods. Meaning we as the engineers don't dictate to the contractor how they are to conduct the bypass pumping. It's really up to them. So they had left the site, when I left the site that Wednesday, everything looked good. They were bypass pumping, the hose was in the wet well. And I came back on the Thursday morning to find out that a spill had occurred. Apparently they came back about seven o'clock Thursday morning, found a, the bypass hose lying on the ground next to the wet well and the bypass pump was pumping, so it had been pumping for some time. Unfortunately, Ross sewage did leave the pump station site and got into the lake. We contacted the city, contractor continued, started cleaning up the spill. Apparently the, you know, the contractor didn't secure the pump station site. And what, they felt that it was okay, they had, and believed that this was an act of vandalism. Since the city holds a permit, the city had to report the spill to the state. We'd anticipate the state would investigate and probably have a fine levy. To date, no action has been taken, so we haven't heard from anybody from the state. So hopefully it'll be a done deal here, I guess. As the crew number one came out of Wittenburg Access, the manhole number three was our next challenge. They were the core manhole number three. It's, our manhole number three is the actual manhole there at the entrance to Wittenburg Access. Unfortunately, the interior walls had corroded to the point they had weakened the, they had set up the coring machine and anchored the coring machine into the walls, but it kept pulling loose because they didn't have enough. Apparently the walls were thin. They normally would be six inches. They were saying that these were probably three to four inches due to corrosion. So they presented that to the county and decided that the best thing to do would be to replace that manhole. The manhole has got two gravity lines, two gravity service connections coming into it. An eight inch gravity line at the bottom coming in and a line eight inch going out and a force main from Oliver's Landing coming into it with an inside drop. It gets real crowded in there, so what we decided to do is install, instead of a four-foot manhole, which is what's out there, is install a five-foot diameter manhole. It's going to be about 15 feet deep, epoxy coated and with inside drops. And what this will do is it'll prevent, definitely minimize any future corrosion. All the lines are going to come in low, so they're not going to have a lot of gases and a lot of turbulence in the manhole. All the lines are gonna come in low, so they're not gonna have a lot of gases and a lot of turbulence in the manhole. The cost of that manhole was uh thirty-one thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. And again, that was unanticipated. Uh didn't know where, weren't aware we were gonna have to do that until they tried to core it and then unsuccessful with it. The next thing we're gonna, we've talked to the contractor about is we met on site and we've got a pretty good bore, a long bore, thirty-six inch casing underneath Highway one twenty-seven from Shiloh Church Road to Chigger Ridge. We met outside, at site, we looked at him, uh looked at the bore. There's a water line that looks like it's maybe in conflict with where we wanted to put the bore. So we're expecting that the bore is gonna be longer than what we show on the plans. We had it called out for about a hundred and thirty feet. Looks like it's gonna be more like a hundred and sixty feet. We're gonna meet back out there and at the end of this week, they're gonna locate that water line and then we'll have a better idea where this, where the bore is actually gonna end up. There will be an additional cost for that, of course, uh based on the linear footage of the bore. Uh Huffman easement, as we go up from Evans Drugs up to Chigger Ridge Road, uh we had an issue there with an easement. We had to move the pipe over onto the Huffman property and doing so, we had to add another manhole and a little bit more pipe. So that was uh again, it's gonna be an addition that uh was out of our control. We couldn't get the easement that we wanted. Another upcoming, uh I guess, issue is Chigger Ridge Road crossing above Evans Drug. We had that as permitted as an open cut. Uh DOT had approved that. Uh however, since we got our permit, they've resurfaced the road and now we're gonna have to bore it. They won't allow us to open cut the freshly resurfaced road. And the jack and bore, this may cost for the jack and bore is seventy-two thousand, four hundred and five dollars. Uh it's about a forty-five foot bore. Uh from that, we will deduct the cost that they had in their bid for open cutting. So it won't be an additional seventy-two thousand dollars, but it will be an additional cost. I've asked them to provide me a, a cost that they had in their bid for the open cut. The county's also in service connections. The county's approved eleven service connections, ten for, as compensation for easements. And uh one, we had a tree that was in the way on Heritage Farm Road. Uh the landowner said no, would allow us to take the tree down and she wanted a service connection, so we agreed to provide that. Uh those service connections came out to, I don't have that number with me, but it was twenty or, well, I'll have to figure that one out real quick. Let me see here. We've got it on the... Well, I will have to get back with you on that one. The um... As you've probably been made aware, this past week, the crew number one down on Wildlife Access Road hit two gas service lines. Uh these lines were not marked. We did, they did call for locates as they're required to do. Uh the locate company located the main, but they did not locate the service connections. Unfortunately, the contractor did find them. Uh I guess there was an emergency call out last week on the second one. Uh I was told that the contractor uh did a good job of clearing the site, blocking traffic. Emergency crews were out there and the gas company came out and actually crimped the line and, and everything has been taken care of. We believe that the locating company um was probably a little negligent on that. And the last time we looked, it looked like one of their supervisors was out there actually locating the service connections itself. So um what I'd like to let you know is Wildlife Access Road will be closed next week. It will be, there will open cut that. So we're gonna have to do the bypass of one twenty-seven to uh Huffman uh Huffman Road and people can come back around um on Huffman Road back down to Wildlife Access. Now, we anticipate some of the locals will probably still use Shiloh Church Road. They know their way around. But then after that, Shiloh Church Road will be closed in about a week or two for a day, a couple of days. They'll open cut that as well. The um... I was getting a little concerned with some of these additional costs that we were incurring, uh looking at the bore on one twenty-seven and the bore at Chigger Ridge. And um what we want to do is take a look and do a projected cost based on what we know. Where do we think we're gonna end up? So we ran some numbers on that and let you know that um there were several add-ons that we were talking about. The bore there at one twenty-seven, uh Chigger Ridge, some additional pipe for manhole. And uh let me pull this up here real quick, if I may. The um... Huffman easement was an additional cost and uh and some, like I said, it's additional piping that we're gonna have to put in it. Right now, I'm estimating that there's gonna be an additional two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars of additional costs. But there's also gonna be some deducts and what we're looking at is uh there's gonna be some savings on the bore at one twenty-seven and the pipe that they're not gonna be putting in and it'll be boring instead. Chigger Ridge open cut, but we've been working really hard on um trying to find ways of saving money. And one of the main ways we were doing it is working with contractor and DOT to convert some of these bores that we had in our design and that were approved by DOT into open cuts. DOT was reluctant to allow us to do it, but so far, we've, we've taken it once, one cut at a time and we've been pretty successful at it. But um they were also looking at deleting the Highway one twenty-seven section up to S and K Road. All in all, we're estimating probably about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in deducts, which will offset the two hundred and fifty-six that we're projecting for the add-ons, giving you a uh a total addition of about ninety-five thousand dollars. Now, we do have uh contingency, five percent contingency of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Uh so there is money in the contingency and hopefully, we've identified most of the uh, the issues that, that uh that are gonna come up. Once we get out of uh Shiloh Church, onto Shiloh Church Road, all that will be new manholes. So we won't have to worry about tying into the old system. But I also want to point out there are several line items that essentially are contingency line items. There's rock excavation for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that may or may not be required. Special backfill, it's twenty thousand dollars that may or may not be needed. And then some special concrete cap, so uh that with the five percent contingency, there's about four hundred, that hundred, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars of contingency um that might be able to apply to the project now. There's also one other line item on there is uh the Rink Dam to Wittenburg Springs entrance. There's a gravity sewer that we have on Rink Dam Road, uh starting about at Dogwood and running over into Wittenburg Springs entrance. Uh at this point, we don't have a, uh the easement that we need to, in order to get into Wittenburg Springs subdivision. Um the Thompsons are not willing to give us an easement that would allow us to bore across the road and then set a manhole and tie into the existing manhole. If we don't get that, what we're doing is we're, that line is pending. If that property is up for sale, if it is sold and the new buyer agrees to an easement, then we'll move forward with installing that, that gravity sewer. If not, we're estimating that that is about three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars worth of line that might get deducted from the project. If we can't get into access, it existing manhole Wittenburg Access, then we really can't lay that line. So uh all in all, there's potential savings um that could be applied to this. So, so far, I think, honestly, I think we're looking pretty good.
I know this is a uh, I'm, I'm posting a rhetorical question here. The lot is up for sale.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're gonna hold up a three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars worth of sewer line construction that's for economic development purposes um over one lot. Does it make sense to take a little money out of contingency, purchase that lot, and I'm, I'm talking to the commissioners here? Purchase that lot, run the sewer through it and put the lot back up for sale. So um we'll talk about that at some other time, but uh that's just an option. Otherwise, that, that portion of the, the sewer line can't go through.
Right. In order for it to go through, would require us basically to replace quite a bit of road, which I think would be a bit prohibitively expensive. Um we did talk about, that was an option actually that the landowner offered. Uh they, their counter was buy the lot and basically do whatever you want. And I guess they decided that maybe that wasn't an option.
So unless, unless they, out of the goodness of their heart, let us have an easement on that lot, at no point in the future, unless we go under the road, are we gonna have a sewer line running through there? Is that correct? You said we'd have to go under the road, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
What we did is we actually had the, if I may, we had the uh, we moved the line away from the road so we wouldn't have to replace curb and gutter and asphalt. DOT would require us to do a full width pavement replacement.
So what would the cost be, you know, if we didn't get the easement? What, what additional cost would be, there be?
I don't have that number. I would have to ask the contractor and see what they would.
Would it be more?
It would be significantly more.
Okay.
To me, there, uh this whole discussion is significant. You know, maybe I misunderstood. I thought that one manhole, the five foot one, at seventy thousand dollars, I didn't realize it was that high. And then a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty foot bore, I mean, would, did we not measure those things when we started? I mean, it seems like some things were missed that we should have known.
We, we drew up the bore based on the survey that we had and the water line. Um there was a water main that runs through there that I guess was missed on the plans. It's not shown on the plans. And meeting with the contractor and laying this out, you know, they felt, felt that it had to be stretched out a little bit more. So they're saying a hundred and sixty feet is what it is. We were actually added it, well, we were showing it a hundred and twenty-nine feet from basically just outside the edge of pavement to outside the edge of pavement.
With all due respect, you know, the stretches and two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. So uh be diligent and find the savings, I guess, because that's a, the, the project can't continue to magnify in money.
I understand.
Not being responsible on our part uh to allow that to happen.
Yes.
And that's right. And uh I, I will mention one thing. That's why we always put money in contingency, because there's always, I do construction every day. There's always gonna be things that pop up that are unexpected. There's never, never a time when it goes exactly as expected.
Well, but our contingency money is about gone and we're, we've got a lot of project left.
Question I have is on our manholes on the depth. Did we not know going into this what our depth would want to be on these different lines being put in? Because that would determine the manhole depth, I would think.
Certainly.
For manhole or did we do figures that would be in line with the depth of those manholes?
We did full set of plans with plan and profile, so we have depths for all the manholes. The, the only manhole that was really a, presented a problem was the existing manhole that they couldn't core. That was thirty-one thousand dollars and then, of course, you know, to, to address the cost, another seventy thousand dollars was a Chigger Ridge bore, which we didn't anticipate because the DOT can't, you know, resurface the road. That's a hundred thousand dollars. Huffman easement was eleven, almost twelve thousand dollars. And the service connections that weren't really part of the project, but they were part, they are part of the project because of the easements was another twenty-two thousand dollars. So that's a big portion of that, two hundred and fifty-six was uh the manhole, the bore, the realigning, the easements and the service connections as well. So.
Couldn't get a, yeah, I mean, a homeowner or the landowner would not give you an easement. The Huffman easement, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, it was uh Charles Mulgrave. Um and we had talked to, I know David had talked, David Moose had talked to Mr. Mulgrave. And actually, I had talked to Mr. Mulgrave and he wasn't interested. Actually, he said for ten thousand dollars or something, he would, he, he threw a number out there, but he, he really wasn't interested in giving the county an easement.
All right. Any other questions? Um just one question. The, the manhole that is down there, Wittenburg Access, how long has it been in place? Do you have any idea?
It was installed in the early nineties, right, late eighties, early nineties.
What, what percentage of the project is done?
Um, well, I'd have to get back to you on that. I'd have to look at the total footage.
Yes. Twenty percent approximately?
I don't think they've, I don't think they've taken their first draw yet, have they?
They've submitted a pay request. Uh where, we've reviewed it. We had some issues with it, some questions about it. Sent it back to them and we got it back on Friday, so we're gonna review it. Excuse me, they had, had some questions about, the pay request is set up uh to pay per linear foot based on the depths of the pipe and depths of the manholes. So we had some questions about how they came up with their depths. So we provided them some additional information and said, look, here's what we're gonna go by. And uh, and then they revised the pay request and sent that back to us. You know, guessing, um as far as the gravity sewer goes, you know, they may be twenty or thirty percent done.
Okay, well, that's kind of what I thought, somewhere in that range. So if we're twenty or thirty percent into the project with a quarter million dollars worth of unknowns, are we gonna have, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of unknowns in the next seventy percent of the project? That, that's, that's my concern. If we got that many unknowns already, you know, law of averages tells me we're gonna have that many more coming. So uh concerned, definitely on my part.
I can appreciate that. And as I say, we're, we're going back and looking at uh, you know, how we can cut some costs, you know. And again, looking at primarily looking at the uh converting the bores to open cuts. But, you know, it is uh, just some of the things that we've run into were, were really unanticipated. And some of them, like I said, were self-inflicted, um you know, with the spill, but unfortunately, that wasn't a, a cost. But uh and then getting some of these uh, like I said, the bore on one twenty-seven.
Dan, do you think you started in the worst spot first as far as, you know, with that hole and the older utilities you're running into? Do you think as you go forward, it's gonna be newer items to connect to or?
I definitely think we've, we're in the worst part of the project right now as far as wildlife and Shiloh. It's not that we chose to be there. You gotta start in the downstream end and work up. That's just the way you lay sewer. So once we get out of, really, once we get onto Shiloh Church Road and get further down that, we should have been in better conditions. Going up Sugar Ridge will be a challenge, but uh... Going up Sugar Ridge will be a challenge, but once we get up on Chigger Ridge and head up to Rink Dam Road, that should be easy. It should be straightforward. The forest mains ought to be straightforward. That ought to go relatively quick. So that's why I'm thinking that, excuse me, that's why I'm thinking that once we get out of this section of it, actually, I think it'll be a lot easier project.
All right. All right. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, well, we appreciate the update, Mr. Chavaleen. And look forward to hearing from you again in a month or two.
All right, be glad to do it. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number four, which is the agreement between Alexander County and the town of Taylorsville. We're providing property tax services for the town of Taylorsville. I'm Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a four year agreement with the town. The town pays us three percent on the collections. It pretty much continues what we've been doing, but it's a four year agreement starting July first of twenty twenty.
Does anyone have any questions? Do we have a motion?
I'm sorry, just a quick question. That's been sort of the contract for how long, Mr. French?
Three or four years, five years. That's where this where the the amount we charge is based on the statutes. We can't go. That's what that's the max we can go.
That's what I was curious was that was that has the cost of what we provide remain the same or you know, is is it become a more expensive endeavor?
No, the three, no, it hasn't. It's it's gone pretty well.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It will move on to item number five, which is agreement between Alexander County and the town of Taylorsville to contract with each other for the provision of technical planning and zoning assistance. Again, Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a one year agreement with the town for sixteen thousand dollars to provide the services, planning, code enforcement, and those things that we've been doing. This is a year to year agreement. And this agreement will become effective July first of twenty twenty. Glad to try to answer any questions.
Same as the previous question, I guess, is the cost of that service remain pretty constant for what we do?
Yes, sir.
This is the same contract I read too, but there's nothing that's changed. It's the same as what I had before, correct?
Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve between Alexander County and the town of Taylorsville to contract with each other for provisions planning and zoning assistance.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number six on the agenda, approval to conduct the regular scheduled July twentieth two thousand twenty meeting using Zoom. And I call him Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I know we had discussed switching to in person meetings in July. I was going to ask, since I have knee replacement surgery on July sixth, that if we did one more Zoom meeting, then I think I'd be ready to go early in August. And I was just going to ask if we could stay with Zoom at least one more meeting.
Okay. Does anybody oppose to that? All right. I don't like I don't like using Zoom for our meetings, but we want to keep our county manager healthy. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'll make a motion that we well, do we even need to approve that?
No, you don't. Fine with it by consensus, we'll be okay.
Yep, we're good. Item number seven on the agenda, budget ordinance amendments, number sixty through sixty two and sixty three, and grant project budget ordinance submit ordinance number P dash three. Rick French, County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, budget amendment number sixty two is to increase detention center budget for estimated inmate medical bills through June the thirtieth. Also to increase the detention center and sheriff's office budget for estimated expenses related to COVID nineteen and to increase the detention center revenues based on revised projections for the remainder of the budget year. Miscellaneous revenue from amounts written off by medical providers for prior year inmate medical bills. And that's number sixty two. Number sixty three is to budget for United Way Funds for Adult Services Food Program. Budget for Families First Funds through the Western Pea Mott Council of Governments to assist the Congress Home Delivered Meals Program and to budget for Meals on Wheels Grant from the State Employees Credit Union to assist home delivered meal programs through the COVID nineteen health crisis. And our project ordinance is the COVID relief funds that we received from the state, from actually from the feds, federal government to the state to us, totaling eight hundred and sixty thousand and eighty nine dollars. And I'll be glad to answer questions about any of those you want to ask.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve budget ordinance amendments sixty two and sixty three and grant project budget ordinance number P three.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? There be none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, one question. I think I heard it correctly, but we can use the COVID budget for these COVID expenses that are broken out. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number eight on the agenda, board appointment and reappointments. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Region E Aging Advisory Committee reappoint Shirley Mays for two years. Western Pea Mott Regional Transit Transportation Board reappoint Rick French for three years. Appoint David Moose as the alternate for three years. National Crime Prevention Council appoint Police Department for two years, David Moose two years, reappoint for two years Douglas Bowman, Kerry Nitsu, John Presnel, Ken Coward, Dan Wanta, Nikki Cahill, Erica Lowe, and Mike Millsaps. And the Tax Office appointments, appoint Doug Fox as tax administrator and assessor, and Guy Curley as assistant and tax collector. And both those are for four year terms effective July first, twenty twenty. Questions?
Anyone have any questions? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for board appointments and reappointments as stated by Mr. French.
As your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to item number nine on the agenda, other business, the county manager's report. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things to mention. One, we have also the on the North Carolina Association, excuse me, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners have been having weekly managers' meetings. The last three meetings, we've talked about the CARES, the skip, I'm sorry, the CARES Act funding from the federal government, which was passed along to the state. The federal government suggested that forty five percent of those funds be passed along to county governments, the state, but appropriated four percent of those funds with a with and they're holding another four percent force for a total of eight percent. And that would apply to the to ninety seven counties, three counties dealt directly with the federal government and got the funding. So I just want to make you aware of that. We need to contact our legislative delegation about supporting us to bring that number up for expenses. And I just want to mention that tonight. I'll get you the copy of the letter and the information. Also, we need to designate a voting delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners annual conference. And it'll be done virtually this year, this coming year, but we need to, we need a person for the designation for the business session. We need to do that. If I can mention two other things, sorry. But next, we have a meeting at the Stoney Point Elementary School. Elementary School wastewater project is it's on schedule. It just started. Our first meeting is June twenty third, and we'll update you on that. Also, the city of Hickory approved the three percent water rate increase to all their customers, and they had talked about three point seven. So what we need to do is appoint a voting delegate for the annual conference of the NCACC.
I nominate Commissioner Larry Yoder.
That was quick. I I'll be there anyway because the board directors have to be there, so.
Yeah. Do you accept your nomination?
I'll be glad to do it. I'll be zooming the whole.
You'll be zooming the whole time. Okay. All right, well, you're it then unless anybody else disagrees. Ronnie, Marty, you good with that? Commissioner Reese, Commissioner.
I'm good.
Mr. French, I have a question about the COVID nineteen funding that came in. Okay, so it was recommended that the counties receive forty five percent of that funding.
Yes, sir.
We are receiving four percent and the state is holding another four percent for us.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what part of the state decided to take the other money and, you know, use it for their own purposes?
Well, it was done by the General Assembly. It was, I think the holdup was in the Senate, on the Senate side. I can get you the, I'll get you the the letter, the details and responses. There's been some back and forth through the ACC and the legislature. But so far, that's where it is.
Okay. All right.
I think the whole thing, Mr. Chairman, I think the entire thing came down to the fact that when they were breaking this money down, the the House wanted to make sure that counties got the money. And the Senate did say, no, 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 let's hold on to some of this money just in case. And there was a big back and forth through them, and they never was able to get anything to do, anything done. And then last week, the association has written a letter to the General Assembly advising them on how they'd like to see equal fair share of the money come back to the county. I was thinking that that you all may have gotten that through the association from Kevin Leonard or either from our president, Kevin. But I'll see if I can find that letter and I'll I'll send you all a copy of it.
Perhaps we need some general talking points to craft our communication to our representatives.
We'll send those to you. The part of the argument was, or maybe I should say, part of the discussion was about the word should and the word shall. Now, by members of the Senate that it said should not shall. And so I'll I'll get you, I'll get that information. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I have a, we have some things for closed session. And we'll have some sessions, some staff. We want to talk about a couple of things with with all of you.
Okay. The consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as given.
Second? I'll second it. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I only have one question. I know that these officers, and we normally give the service revolver to retiring officers. And we give those things to them to to let them know that we appreciate the use of service they give to Alexander County and to the citizens of this great county. We have one that's just leaving the sheriff's department and is not retiring and asking for his weapon. And that's something that we've normally not done. And I just wonder if anybody knows why that's being done, because that's usually something that's a privilege of the people that are retiring.
I can find that out and get that information back to you to the board.
Yeah, I mean, it's just we've always done retiring personnel. And I was just surprised that when they asked for someone that was leaving the the sheriff's department.
Okay, yes, sir.
So where does that put us with that addition then? That we have to pull that and vote separately on it?
I I think you you would and just we'll place it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Yeah, but then that's that's nothing against anybody or anything, but I just found it really strange. That's all, you know.
Do I think we'd want to go ahead and approve the Donna Planton, she is retiring. Is that correct?
Yes.
And Kat and Pennel, they've given us years of service for this county. It's a tremendous honor to be able to vote yes for them to be able to get their weapons. They've done a good job and they supported this county for a long, long time and appreciate the service that they've given us, Ken.
Very much, very much. Both have stellar reputations, so.
Yes.
So we'll just take the one item and set it aside until the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right. Let me restate my motion that we approve the consent agenda with the addition of surplusing the requested items for Donna Planton.
And Chad Pennel.
And Chad.
Chad's is already on. I'll second that. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will move into closed session. And when we adjourn or when we come out of closed session, we will do so just for adjournment. But I will make a motion that we move into closed session for North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three eighteen point eleven A five and six to discuss contractual.
I sent you the information to connect to the.
Got a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. We are now in closed session.